Bang that a couple of times, okay? And we'll have Claire. Okay, Claire, you want to do it? All right, we are double calling the meeting to order thanks to Rory and Claire. This is the West Hartford Town Council meeting. It's actually a very special meeting. This is when we swear in our new councillors and say goodbye to our councillors that are leaving. We will first begin with a roll call. Mr. Davidoff.
Good evening, Madam Mayor. Councillor Winograd. Councillor Zidanowitz.
Here.
Councillor Pollan is also here for the record.
Yeah, Councillor Pollan.
Uh oh. Thank you, Mr. Davidoff. All right, well, we are going to be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by the Sweeney, by the young Sweeneys, okay? Rory, you want to?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we did the roll call. One second. Close this door so we don't lose any children. All right, the first on our agenda is really meaningful, and that is our, we say goodbye to our leaving member, who is Deputy Mayor Sweeney. And as you can see, he is joined with his family. And this is Rory, Claire and Finn, and his beautiful wife Whitney. And we are so grateful to the Sweeney family for their incredible generosity in lending us lamb for so many nights and for so much effort. So I'm wondering if there's somebody that would like to start with saying goodbye to Liam. Ms. Blanks.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Deputy Mayor Sweeney, Liam, thank you for your service for the past three terms. I thank you for your leadership, being politically astute, passionate about growing and improving town services, positioning our town to attract younger cohorts, families, recognizing the potential to grow our golf course, pushing back on developers for real affordable housing in our ongoing development and for the community culture center. Your voice was aloud and very clear about the need. I especially loved how insistent you were about the teen space being more than adequate for our teens and young people. I believe you referenced it often as, I'm not certain if I should say this, but he did say a closet or perhaps a conference room. And he was very clear that we should have a space for all of our teens in town to utilize that was more than adequate. Deputy Mayor, you are the voice suggesting strongly inclusivity and transparency and always asking staff, what more can we do to help? You have a way of remembering the needs of the youth, whether it's program enrollment for summer programs or affordable fees for all families to enjoy pool use and recreation services and recognizing our youth when they achieve their highest honor, be it sports or academics. I feel I've experienced and observed your growing family over the years. I must shout out your beautiful wife Whitney, your bride that you often reference, and your three beautiful children that are sitting up here with you today for sharing their dad. I can't forget your parents who groomed you. Above all, I am thankful for the beautiful professional relationship we've developed. I will miss your contributions and your presence. Again, thank you, Deputy Mayor Liam.
Mr. Cortez.
Mr. Sweeney, so first of all, I want to thank you for your leadership on the council, taking time to, you know, sit with me and go over some of our, you know, committees that we shared and some of the concerns I had. And also for your leadership to this town, you know, so you're Mr. West Hartford, right? I mean, you're, you know, you're a product of West Hartford and you believe in this town so much that you're, you know, you want a better place for your kids to grow up in, you know, that's how much you believe in West Hartford, and that means a lot. As Mrs. Blanks has stated before, you know, your passion, especially with the, with the teen center and, you know, some of these programs, you know, the at-risk youth benefit from it. So it's just everybody, all the youth, and we're, and our youth are going to have a better place, and that's because of you. And even though it's sad to see you leave, I know that you're just a phone call away should, you know, should we need you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. Ms. Pollan?
Thank you. Liam, I'm very happy to call you my friend and to be able to serve with you, why I consider to be a consummate public servant. As others have mentioned, you're a West Hartford kid through and through, raised here, raising your family here with your very patient and intelligent wife Whitney and your three kiddos. So glad that you brought them with you tonight, actually. It's great for us to see them. Liam, you've been such a good support for me since I joined Town Council. Got placed on the two committees on which you also serve, and so that's been great for me to be able to learn from you. Human and Community Services is actually a lot more complicated than some people might realize, given that we have a bunch of different accounts that are set up for the different, different things that we do with leisure services and parks and recreation and so forth. And of course, finance, always a little bit challenging and happy to have you by my side on that committee as well. I've known you for many years, and you always look young, but you have never looked younger than you have in the past six months since you announced that you were not running for reelection to the Town Council. You are somebody who, you are smart and earnest and compassionate and a hard worker. You know, you know how to use the system and you know how to use the system to benefit, to benefit our residents. You do sometimes fall into a habit of mumbling. We've all experienced that. It's always worth listening to you. So I want to just thank you for all that you put out there. I suspect that you are not done with public service. If I have anything to say about it, we'll get you back on some sort of a committee, leading some charge in some way or another. And I just wish you the best and thank you for all you've given to our town so far and for what you're going to give to us in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Pollan. Mr. Zidanowitz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Liam, we haven't just worked together for the last two years here on Town Council, but we actually worked together while I was on the Board of Ed during budget season. And, and we didn't always agree on things, specifically budget, and, and we didn't always agree on town matters. But what we did is we always had respect for each other and a perspective, and we always listened to each other. And it was always professional, and, and I appreciate that. It was always, we could be at opposite ends of the spectrum on something, but we would walk away shaking hands and patting each other on the back in good conversation. And that's really meant a lot to me, and I appreciate that council over the years. We've had a few things in common. One of them has been our town sports that we both enjoy. I carried that banner, if you will, of sports on the Board of Ed always, along with some others as well, and for many years. Your passion, though, for local sports is infectious. Your Facebook posts on winning teams or an individual accomplishment was faster than the team could actually put on Facebook. And he was always congratulating them, and then during meetings congratulating as well. And while we're there, we can talk about the, our state champs, the boys soccer team at Hall. I know both Mayor and I were at, and it was a great game. And I was glad to have worked with you too, also on the potential golf range, potential changes at the Rockledge. Your counsel during that time and your perspective was insightful, and that will be, will be surely missed. I appreciate all the hard work that you've done here on Town Council and for the town. You're passionate about it. And quite honestly, I got to tell you, when I heard you weren't running, I was shocked because I couldn't see this, this particular council without you because I just assumed you'd stick it out and keep going. But I understand you've got bigger and better things to do, and, and that's fine. But you'll be missed here. Even, even if we disagree, I'll still, I'll still respect you, and, and I encourage you to still keep in contact so that we can still have those discussions and, and continue that. I wish you the best of luck. You've got three great kids and your wife and your family here, and that's great. And thank you for doing the Pledge of Allegiance. That was awful nice. Thank you, and great luck for the future.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Zidanowitz, Ms. McGinnis.
Thank you, Mayor. So this is short, but it doesn't mean it isn't as heartfelt as the law goes. I want to say thank you for your service to this town. I want to say thank you for always giving me advice, even if it wasn't what I wanted to hear. I remember, and I think it was the night of our endorsement meeting, I remember talking to you on my drive home, sitting in the driveway, and you said to me that I had a story and I had a voice that was needed in local government. And I really appreciate you telling me that. Our town has been lucky to have you, and I know that that meant taking time away from your family, so I appreciate them sharing you with us. There's a quote by RFK Senior that says, "The purpose of life is to contribute in some way to making things better." And I want you to know that you've certainly done that for this town and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Ms. Fay?
Yes, thank you very much. Trying to see you, Liam. I see your little buddies here, and that's, that's, that's great. Gosh, I'm sorry to see you go, I really am. I know we enjoyed some very good sparring. I'll miss that. I will, I really will. I think it's the Irish in us, absolutely, positively. And I think good discussion and sometimes having an opposing view, we could use a little bit more of that. There is, seemed to be a course of, of one voice, so I'm glad that we did have those exchanges. But I'm as equally as proud as you are of the youth center and what's going to become of that. I like to look at myself as a child advocate. I did a lot of volunteer work in the schools when Katie was younger, and I really hope you enjoy your time with your family. It's, it's the best when they're this age. And Katie's birthday is today, so I'm looking forward to going back. But I remember this age, it wasn't all that long ago, and your kids do need your home, and I think it's going to be great that you'll have more time to spend with them. So really enjoy it and best of luck in your business as well. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. And happy birthday to Katie. Sorry, we're ruining the celebrations, it happens. I want to, I want to say goodbye to Liam, but I want to say thank you. Liam actually grew up, four houses from us, I think, on Foxcroft, something like that. And he was the big, the big kid. I have four sons, and they were, they were a few years younger. And Liam was a big, cool kid, and they were always a little, I don't know. And Chris and Bill have been friends for a long time, and I, I was so thrilled when, when Liam shared his interest in serving on the council. And I thought he was a little crazy with young family, and I think you just had Rory at the time. And, and so I, I really admired the fact that he was stepping in purely because of how much he cares for his community. And so I really was so taken with that. And I met Whitney fairly quickly. I learned about, I think, your first date, when, I think Whitney's either vegan or vegetarian, and Liam was like wolfing down a hamburger and didn't know. And so obviously, you, you love him, all of, all of Liam. And so, but, and getting to know Rory, who is, he will be a chess champion somewhere, right? And getting to know Claire and your spunk and your smarts and your beauty and marching and parades and all, all that you have to offer. And Finn, welcome to the world. You are, you are going to make your mark, no question. So, you know. Now, such a beautiful family, and really the, the commitment, well, you know, everybody has said it, it is real. And it's not just being at the meetings, it's preparing for committee meetings, it's being on the phone with, with, hi Finn, with all of us, but, but a lot with me. And I, I relied on Liam for a lot, and he was always, always there. We might not have connected immediately, our lives are both busy, but he would always get back to me. And at times when he sensed something was difficult or, or something was challenging, he would always call to check in. That's Liam. He's always thinking about people, and that has been his work, always. So I, I just am really, really honored to have been by the remarkable man, your dad, and I'm really, really proud of, of him and it's, and being a great father to you. So Liam has also been developing his business, his work business, which is again, all about relationships and trust. And that is, again, what Liam does. He pushes all of us to be better, all the elected officials, staff at times, asking some very difficult questions. And you've heard his connection to youth. I think Liam understood how lucky he was, growing up with parents that cared so deeply about him and supporting him, and understood that sometimes that hand, a hand up to a child in need, a youngster in need, a teen in need, made a lot of difference. And so Liam is that voice. Liam made those relationships. He didn't just talk about them, he lived them. He mentored, he coached, coaches, I think, still. And, and he does make a difference in so many young people's lives. He also has brought our, he has had a lot of impact throughout these six years that he's served. Throughout COVID, there's been, there was so much, again, always concerned about how are our children mentally and physically doing during this time of COVID and our youth and activities. The St. Bridget Purchase, as, as Ben Winograd said when, before he left, was that, "I hope you're going to be at the ribbon cutting of the community center because that will have your fingerprints all over it." The envisioning plan, improvements to parks, TOD zoning, pension refinance and reserve reform, cannabis, highest levels of reserve in town, our pilot solid waste that you're participating in right now, the allocation appropriation of our ARPA funding, approval for one park, which we now are seeing investments in the commercial centers around the corner and across the street, Berkshire Road, our Troutbrook Trail buildout, Camelot approvals, or, well, Camelot, the, the visioning of Camelot, Aguirre-Sacum synagogue, the approval that we just did, adding the social work director to our police department. All of those were things that you had a hand in, and you were instrumental in, in doing all of that legislation. As Deputy Mayor, I was able to work more closely with a friend who is confident, politically savvy, has a very dry sense of humor, and sometimes is challenging, but always, always finds something bright and light and humor and a bright side to it all. I mean, we, sometimes we would be on a, a text chain and he would just add some funny little something and have us all laughing. So I know you are going to stay involved because you're driven by your caring, you have a big heart, and you are motivated to keep all of our young people safe, physically and mentally healthy. And I am so grateful for your service, and I would like all of us to rise and give Liam a standing ovation. There's a couple of mugs in here. One is for the beginning of the day, that he'll have a little more time because sometimes we had eight o'clock meetings. And one is for the end of the day. One is a coffee mug and one is another, maybe a brown drink mug, that says happiest hours and without the council it will be. Thank you. And also, we're going to just present Liam with his chair. Okay? It says, Liam Sweeney, West Hartford Town Council. Can you help me read that? 11/20/17 to 11/20/23, Deputy Mayor, 11/20/21 to 11/20/23. Yes, thank you. All right, Liam, I think Liam wants to say a few words.
Thank you, everyone, for the comments. And driving over here, I was, I was like thinking about, this is the last time I'm going to be driving down the street, thinking about the time, every time we've left here. But, you know, I'll just say, it's, it's been an honor of my lifetime to serve the town that I grew up in. When I first, first ran, you know, I approached it as, this is the community I grew up in, and what I wanted to do was ensure that we, as a council, started communicating more to our, our youth and communicating more to the parents of young children that I am now a father of three of. I was just looking at a picture that came up the other day, and I had just, we had just had Rory the year before, and now we have three of them. So it's quite, quite a change. But, you know, before I forget, I want to make sure I thank everyone who helped get me here. First and foremost, my wife, Whitney, who put up with the idea, we first met when I was staffing Senator Dodd, and I told her I'm pretty certain that I will never run for office because I was so certain that I didn't want to do it. And here we are, six years later, and without her, I wouldn't have this, these beautiful children that sat through this so far and one that's on his way out. And then my, my parents, who have supported me all along, and without them. Hi, Finn. My, my sister, hi. My sister Mariah, who has been down here to help out on campaigns and just be supportive. And then I actually also have a special guest here too, Hannah Kaiser, who is, was my treasurer throughout the whole time and a lifelong friend, so it's great to have her here as well. But I, you know, the other folks that I, you know, want to make sure I thank are Rosemarie Tate, who is my biggest supporter. From the moment I decided to run, she put, put her shoulder behind me and here I am. And also want to thank you, John Bailey, from the Town Committee, who is here, and Judy Casterson, who helped get me here and supported me when I ran. I know it's a lot of thank yous, but I, I need to make sure I thank all of you because it, it means a lot to me. So Sheri, I'll start with you. In six years, six years ago, I don't think I would have thought we would have gone through the kind of blur of things that we went through. We went through a pandemic, some challenging political issues, some significant community emergencies, and here we are, all the wiser for it. And I appreciate you trusting me through that, particularly during the pandemic, to head up the community and leisure response and working directly with kids. I remember we did a Zoom with Senator Murphy and Representative Gilchrist, and I thought that, that was just a really, a moment in my life I won't forget of just being stuck in that, that box with everyone. But we were, with your leadership, we, we were able to keep the, the town rolling. And I think as Mr. Davidoff said at the time, you know, communities that do well during this and think and prepare well will come out of this better and stronger. And I think we are here today, seeing the, the fruit of that labor. I want to thank my comrade, Ben Winograd. I was my comrade from another dad, I would say. I appreciate Ben, he was, you know, a progressive champion here, continues to be. I'm super happy for him and the next steps as Deputy Mayor. He's worked so hard for this community and continued to push us, and I wish he was here today. Carol, as always, you are one of the most thoughtful, prudent people I've ever met. You are so prepared, you're so professional, you always make me like want to clean up. Like, I don't feel like I'm ever prepared to be around you. Your notes are the, the most beautiful things I've ever seen written because I sit next to you and you're just there. I'm like, wow, that's, I don't think ever, but I will miss, miss the conversations we've had, your, your sage advice to me throughout the whole time we were here and when you were on the Board of Ed, and I appreciate you as a friend. Deb, as you noted, we've been friends for a long period of time before this space, but it was great when I knew that you were going to, thinking about coming up here. And it makes me, you know, very happy to know that you did come up here during that time. I think I learned so much from you being on those two committees with you. You are a budget whiz. Do not try to skip a page on Deb Poll and she will come find you. And just the way that Kevin Solomon would like it. But, you know, and your, your connection to the community is just something that I will always appreciate. Tiffany, you know, I'm saying bye today, but I'm sure we'll talk tomorrow. You know, I'm sorry that I recruited you to this job. Yeah, I lied. It would be easy, but I'm just so happy that you have embraced this, and I am so en- It would be easy, but I'm just so happy that you have embraced this, and I am so encouraged to see what you're going to do. And to Al, I still remember our first coffee at Sally and Bob's, and I appreciate you reaching out, and it's been an absolute honor to work with you, and your thoughtfulness every time. I mean, it's what Sheri reaches over, and Mr. Cortez, do you have an update? I appreciate that, and appreciate your openness to that conversation. Mark, we are of similar spirits. We have some mutual friends, and I think it's just our general passion for the town, and the love of our kids and the sports they play, and is a great connection that we've had, and I think that's helped us kind of bridge some, some gaps that traditionally aren't there. And I think that's one of the things that I really think local politics can really do, is bring people together based on the, you know, the general connection that you have as neighbors, as opposed to as like, as partisan. But I will, I will miss that, and I'm sure I will be reading about your family throughout the season. And Mary, we, we are Irish at heart and mind, and we have had our engagements, but I appreciate your passion and your spirit. And, you know, I think one of the things that we connected on is your, you know, your love for your family, and I, I can relate to that. And again, I think we are of similar elk at some time, and I, I appreciated those conversations and the back and forth, and I, you know, I wish you all the best. All right, well, that's a lot of thank yous, and I feel like I'm taking up too much time, but I, I won't see a lot of these people again, or I won't see them that often. I want to make sure that they know that I appreciate them. Chief Priest and Chief Reddick, thank you for putting up with me and my multiple questions, and sometimes pointed questions on budget items. I appreciate your responsiveness, and through the multiple emergencies that we went through, always dealt with my, my text messages and questions. I, I truly do appreciate that. Gina, thank you. I think I had a term for you, for those of you who are familiar with Anchorman. There are, there's a, there's a scene in there where, you know, they say, "He'll read anything on the teleprompter," and basically, that's what this is. So Gina, thank you for providing us that teleprompter. It, it helped us get through some sticky meetings, but honestly, we've had some great conversations. You've been such an asset to this town, particularly in the zoning space, as we have been busy on that. I will see Dallas some other time, you know, I see him almost all the time, but I appreciate him, what he helped us get through, as well as Cynthia and the work that every, that whole team did through COVID. Helen Rabino Turco, thank you for being patient with me and my multiple questions, and sometimes too much, but I, I hope you understand that it all was to help better our kids in the community center. You run the best leisure service program in the state, in my mind. We sell out every program within minutes, and that is not by accident, that is on purpose. And I just want to give her, her kudos on amazing programming that she helps stay at the top. John Phillips, for making all the trains and trucks and everything else run on time. He is an amazing person and runs an amazing team, and without him, I don't know where we would be. Peter Pravatera, thank you for keeping me in line on finance, and thank you for keeping us all in line and making sure the town runs so smoothly. Todd Boys, thank you so much for all the work that you've done, being patient with the questions I've had on zoning, as well as Dwayne Martin for showing up and helping out wherever. Joe Dakers, for dealing with my ignorance on tax policy, appreciate that. Jen Evans, your passion for making sure the town runs, and for giving me my first sports broadcasting opportunity. That was a fantastic time, calling the Connerd Games. Bob Palmer, Jared in IT. And then lastly, you know, Laura, and then especially Carol Waxman with the library. We spent a lot of time on Zoom with her during COVID, and the programming they did that my kids are now benefiting from is something that I didn't, I didn't truly appreciate until I did this job. But, and then the last but not least is Rick. Rick, you are the best town manager in the biz. Your connection to the community, your humility, and accessibility is something that I will forever remember, and I will see you a lot outside of here, for the right reasons, and Rick knows why. And I just, we're, what I, you're, what you do is you hold this town together, and I don't think you get enough credit for that. And over the last couple of years, as you've moved into this, you have really made this your own space, and you help hold us together. You get us answers in the blink of an eye. You, you know the, the parts of town that you're referring to, because you've been there, you've seen it, you've walked it. And I can't tell you how much that means to, to me, to other people, when we're asking for, for, for questions. Your ability to work with people is unbelievable. I mean, no one gives you credit, enough credit for what you did with the police union a couple of years ago. That was a big deal. And I think that, you know, the town manager role across the country is something that's falling apart, but I think they should just basically, they can just clone you and put you out to any other community, and it'll work just fine. But honestly, thank you for everything you've done, help, thank you for teaching me so much. And through, we've had a lot of big emergencies come up, and you spend the time with each person to walk them through the decision process, and that, that truly is, is something. So I have so many things that I, I want to talk about, but I, I think we've kind of touched on them. I will promise that you guys will not hear the term "building the plane" as we fly it again. We use that too much during COVID. But I, I want to let you know that as I am leaving today, you, you no longer have to worry about this, Sweeney, but you should know that Rory Sweeney was just elected to the Morley Student Council, so you have to watch out. So it is, again, the honor of my lifetime for being here, representing this town, and I will be forever grateful for everyone here, and to my family, and to everyone who helped put me in this chair, who I did not mention today, but I will miss it, and thank you so much.
So weird. Feel free to stay. There's a cake for you. We go to number two, which is new business, certification of election of councillors in town election, November 7th, 2023, and presentation of certificates to each councillor. Mr.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I start, I want to let everyone know that everyone's cordially invited to have some cake to celebrate Deputy Mayor Sweeney's service to the, to the town. It's a big cake, so we do need help eating it. With the certification of the election, I, Leanne S. Davidoff, Town Clerk of the Town of West Hartford, do hereby certify that the following persons who are elected to the West Hartford Town Council for a term from November 21st, 2023, to November 18th, 2025, and they are Carol A. Blanks, Sheri Cantor, Alberto Cortez, Mary Fay, Tiffany McGinnis, Deb Pullen, Barry Walters, Ben Winograd, and Mark Sedanowicz. I further testify that the results of the town election were canvassed and attested to by the head moderator of the election, Umees Tarhar, and the results have been recorded in the electors' meeting book of the Town of West Hartford. We now proceed to the oath of office. So if everybody who has been certified as a elected, electee, I guess at this point, comes forward and I'll administer the oath of office and present you with a certificate. Well, what, we, I think in the past, we've all come over here, I think, so. Do you solemnly swear? Take two. Do you solemnly swear or solemnly affirm, as the case may be, that you will faithfully discharge, according to law, your duties as a member of the West Hartford Town Council to the best of your abilities, so help you God, or on penalty of perjuring? Congratulations.
After, after the holiday, I guess. It's up to you guys if you want. Okay. We will, are now on numbers, letter C, on 2C, we are calling for nominations for council president. Is there a nomination?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Ms.
Mayor Cantor, Sheri. You joined the town council in 2004, advancing to deputy mayor in 2011, and becoming mayor in 2016. You've led the town council for the past three terms as the leader, where budgets were passed and adopted, that were fiscally responsible and financially responsive for the town and town staff. You are often referenced as small in size, but have no doubt you are strong in delivery. You are able to look at an entire issue in need of addressing. You address the pension fund without further delay, growing our grand list, increasing our revenue, and responsive to public safety. You ask and address where can we save and what is cost efficient. You collaborate with elected officials, our state and federal delegations, community boards, and nonprofit organizations. You have a gift of connecting with others, and are knowledgeable about problem solving for residents, business owners, district staff, veterans, and fellow councillors on both sides of the aisle or the council table. You continue to demonstrate you have a long-term vision for our town, and often communicate it is a team effort. The decisions that are made today will impact the future for tomorrow. What I admire most is you are grounded by your family, beginning with your mom, Mrs. Granau, your husband, Michael, your four sons, and now daughter-in-law, and your most precious gem, your granddaughter, Luisa. You, Madam Mayor, have the courage and the strength to do what is right for the entire community. For all these reasons, and many more, I am honored and humbled to nominate Sheri Cantor to serve as the president for this town council for the 2023 term.
I'm for clap. Thank you. Thank you, Carol. That was beautiful. Thank you. Do I have a second?
Yes, Madam, Madam Mayor. It is my honor to second the nomination of Sheri Cantor as council president and mayor of the Town of West Hartford. As my colleague councillor Blanks indicated, Mayor Cantor has a long record of serving our community and making it better. She does this through her service on the Yukon Board of Trustees, Connecticut Children's Medical Center, and Connecticut Food Share, as well as her longtime service on the town council, and for the last seven years as our leader. You see Sheri literally everywhere around town, at business openings, community meetings, town festivals, staff awards and promotion ceremonies, poetry readings, throwing out the first pitch for Little League baseball, ground breakings, and of course, doing her trademark cartwheels during our Memorial Day and Park Road parades. But what you don't see, what we have the privilege of seeing as fellow town council members, is the work that she does behind the scenes. She dedicates countless hours each week to communicating with residents and business owners, our town manager, and other leaders, and state and national officials on behalf of West Hartford. She's compassionate and forward-thinking, always thinking of how to make our town a better place in which all people can live, work, play, and retire. I had the pleasure of serving on the Board of Education for five years prior to joining the town council last November. I can attest that Sheri is equally committed to ensuring that our students, families, and school leadership and staff get the resources they need to maintain our rankings as some of the best schools in the state, and indeed the country. Sheri gets that our schools are gems in our community, and that the Board of Education and Town Council must work together to ensure families in our town feel welcome, and that we are well positioned to create our next generation of leaders. Sheri is also dedicated to her family. As is always mentioned, she grew up here in West Hartford and chose to stay and raise her family here. You can feel how close and loving the Cantors are when you're around them. Sheri and Michael, and Sheri's mom, and their four boys, and now their daughter-in-law and granddaughter. She also serves as a mentor to and role model for many, and she is a dedicated friend. Sheri's ability to listen and coalesce ideas, her business acumen, her political sensibilities, her financial expertise, and her willingness to try new initiatives, all set Mayor Cantor apart from the others. She has the values, vision, and skill set that our town needs for the issues facing us today, and to prepare us for the future. She may be short in stature, but we know she is head and shoulders above the rest. I hope you will join me in supporting Mayor Cantor as another, for another term as council
Thank you. It's really hard to hear this. Thank you. That was very lovely. Okay, I, now to business. Motion, there's been a motion, there's been a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Okay, now call for nomination for council vice president. Did you get that? Okay. Barry, Mr. Walters, welcome, Mr. Walters.
Thank you, and thank you, Madam Mayor. First, we can say hello to Ben Winograd, who is watching us right now from Madrid. Can't miss it, can he? So it is my honor and pleasure to nominate town councillor and my good friend, Ben Winograd, as vice president of the West Hartford Town Council. Ben grew up here and has watched the community evolve and grow. He raised his family here, and he simply loves this, his hometown. Ben is an amazing advocate for so many things, truly affordable housing, workers' rights, recycling, and smart growth, to name a few. He is committed to a West Hartford that is diverse and inclusive for all. He is a progressive voice that knows that pragmatism and measured change is the avenue to real results. I am so proud of my friend and now colleague, Ben Winograd, and I believe that he will serve as deputy mayor with the same determination, passion, honor, and commitment to West Hartford that he has shown since he was first elected and even before. Again, Madam Mayor, I nominate Ben Winograd as vice president and deputy mayor for the West Hartford Town Council this term.
Thank you, Mr. Walters. Ms. McGinnis, is there a second?
Yes. It's my honor to second the nomination of Ben Winograd for vice president of the town council. Ben has been a tireless advocate since he joined town council.
Ben has been a tireless advocate since he joined Town Council, I believe, 2015, for those who often don't have a voice. And I know that as deputy mayor, he will continue that work in helping everyone. So it is once again my honor to nominate Ben Winograd for Vice President of the Town Council.
Thank you, Ms. McGinnis. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries unanimously. And then Ms. Pullen.
I move that we appoint Leon Davidoff as the council clerk.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and then we will go to the council committees. I am appointing the councillor committees as follows. Committee members for Community Planning and Economic Development Committee, Chair Tiffany McGinnis, Vice Chair Ben Winograd, Minority Member is Alberto Cortez. Council Affairs and Governance Committee Chair is Sheri Cantor, Vice Chair Ben Winograd, Minority Member is Mark Sedanowicz. Finance and Administration Committee is Chair Ben Winograd, Vice Chair Deb Pullen, and Minority Member Mark Sedanowicz. Human and Community Services is Chair Deb Pullen, Vice Chair Barry Walters, Minority Member Mary Fay. Public Safety Committee Chair Carol Blanks, Vice Chair Tiffany McGinnis, Minority Member Alberto Cortez. Public Works Facilities and Sustainability Commission is Chair Barry Walters, Vice Chair Carol Blanks, and Minority Member Mark Sedanowicz. And that and these are will be on our website, and there also is a description of all of the committees on the website. So if you have any questions or issues on any of those committees, you can call any of us but the chairs, and we all are able to attend any of the committee members' meetings as well. Okay, now we go to resolution adopting standing rules for the Town Council for 2023, 2025. Attorney Verano, would you want to explain this item?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The proposed standing rules are the same that the Town Council adopted in its last term, except for the one rather non substantive addition of the word regular proceeding meeting, and that's in subsection 1A, Romanate 2. Open for any questions?
Are there any questions? For Deputy Corp. Counsel? Okay. The question's on the adoption of the resolution, so all of those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion ha the ayes have it. Resolution setting Town Council meeting dates. I'll make the motion. You make the motion seconded.
I move that we adopt the resolution setting the Town Council meeting dates.
Second. Mr. Town Clerk, could you please explain?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The updated schedule reflects changes in 2024 from April 23, 2024 to April 24, 2023. In observance of Passover Seder, Seder, the 23rd would have been the second night of Passover. So in deference to those who celebrate, the council's been meeting has been moved to April 24, and the same consideration was given in 2025 to move the council meeting from April 23, 2025 to April 22, 2025.
Okay, any questions? All right, the question's on the adoption of the resolution. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Communications, we have a communication. Ms. Pullen.
Without objection, I move that we receive a communication from Barry Walters resigning as Town Council zoning alternate effective November 20, 2023.
Is there any objection? There being no objection, the motion is adopted. That is standard. We can only serve on one committee, and so Barry is now sitting at the table and not an alternate. And then we actually just have announcements prior to adjournment. But I will take point of privilege first. I just want to recognize actually Rosalynn Carter and her passing and the amazing impact that she had on our country and the incredible love that she had with President Carter. And I just want to just just remember how important those people are that served our country and the impact that they had. She was such a champion for mental health and really made some incredible strides that have lasting impact. And I think throughout COVID, I think we all realized maybe how ahead of her time she was, and I just the courage and the strength and the strength that she provided to her president while he served as her as president, but then also as an incredible volunteer for our our country and our world. So I just want to take 15 seconds to just reflect on on the impact of a really powerful, strong, incredible woman. Thank you so much. And so I'm going to take point of privilege to just say a few words words. Before this meeting, the Board of Ed actually adopted that they had their first time, some first time candidates and returning candidates sworn in to be members of the Board of Education. And I want to thank them for their their service in advance and and returning actually Ethan Goldman for for his win. So we have Shannon Merriman, who actually will be Vice Chair, Jason Gagnon, and Latoya Fernandez. I think Yaga Lauf, I think, is her new married name. And for the Town Council, it's a historic night, actually. It's the first night that we actually have elected, and it's pretty remarkable in the 100 years, I think, of so of council manager form of government that we've had. It's the first, I think it's 103 years or something like that, right? 104 years. It's the first time that we have elected a majority of women on the council. So I think that's a little too late, but we're here. And and that's wonderful. And and Barry is also historic in his in his role as right and openly, right? I mean, I think, but whatever. But we want to thank your advocacy, your strength, and and the I know the impact that you're going to make on the council, Barry Walters being our new member of the council. But we actually have two other new members that were appointed and now have been elected. So that's why it seems like, oh, we've had women in the council, but it's the first time that actually they have been elected to the council. So but I do want to take a moment to thank the incredible support that all of us have, but in particular, these three new councillors are have by Deb, Tiffany, and and Barry, David, Matt, and Ian for their incredible support. And because it and thank you for your ongoing support because it's remarkable. And then Nella, Jessica, and Mary, and Charles, thank you for all of what you do to support the people that can be at the council table so they can do the work that is necessary to make us one of the best communities in the country. And now I want to thank my own family. This is a really a different night for me because all of my four adult sons are happen to be in the house here, and my daughter in law, my granddaughter is not because it's bedtime, and she would have been probably a little louder than Finn. I don't know. But but it means it so much to me to have them here. I also am really, really lucky to have my mom, who is has joined me to so many community events and has really been so supportive of me and provided me with so much so much strength to to do so many things. And Mom, I'm so grateful for you. And my brother Bob and my sister in law Nancy are also here from Charlotte, North Carolina for the holiday. Thank you so much for all that you have done for me, for Mom, and I appreciate you all very, very much. I also have, so I just want to say that my Josh and Teresa and Louisa, who's not here, Sam, and my my son's girlfriend Sam Vivian, who is amazing woman, rock star, literally. Ben and Jacob are all here, and I want to give another thank you to my tremendous husband for his remarkable support. And the the remarks of by Carol and Deb really are hard to they're they move me so much, and I want to really thank you for your thoughtful, meaningful, very, you know, really humbling remarks. I thank you very much, both of you. We work on so many issues when, you know, people will say, what do you do? And I'm like, oh, in a day, there's so many different things that come across both, you know, in town management. Parks and Rec, if you've ever seen it, there's a lot that happens on that show. Well, it pales in comparison to what happens here. And the, you know, the writer of that show was from West Hartford, just so you know. And based it on Fern Park, I think, but whatever. But our community expects good, honest, committed governance. And I am so grateful that at this table we have people that want to do what's right for our residents, our businesses, our taxpayers, our families, our schools, and all the things that make us a stellar community. I under I know that they understand that investing in education, investing in public safety, and making sure that the quality of life keeps us one of the best again in the country. Our community relies on resources. At times in need, we sometimes rely on them a little bit more than we might expect. But you have to have the infrastructure and the and the and the investment that you need to to make sure that you meet the moment. And and that has happened over time and time again in our in our town. We also know how important it is to support our town workforce and the leaders, as Mr. Sweeney mentioned, all the directors and the remarkable work that they do every day. And we are recognized all the time. And the Town Manager and I were just at a Public Works Award, a state award that that our Public Works Department received. But John Phillips being a leader in that in that organization and and making sure that we are one of the leaders again in the state and the country. And that these departments, these departments all run efficiently and effectively. Our community expects and deserves elected leaders that make difficult decisions and that are truly in the best interest of not only one person or two people, that might be a squeaky wheel, but in the best interest of the whole community. And not for today, but in 10 years and 20 years and 30 years. Bless you. Investments in economic development in a community are not linear. You can't necessarily predict when you're going to have opportunity to have investment in your community. So it comes in spurts and sometimes levels out. And sometimes the environment is good for economic development. Our post Blueback Square period from 2006 about till from when it was approved, for more than the decade and a half, we did not see much development and all in our in our town. We saw very little private investment and redevelopment. But these late COVID years and our current rears have seen a remarkable investment in our community, adaptive reuse of inefficient and underutilized spaces and buildings. This reinvestment in residential spaces creates reinvestment in businesses and results in a thriving community. For example, in 2021, our one park approval happened. It was the largest residential approval that we had. And the past two years, we've seen investments in the Prospect Plaza and across from that plaza as well. These significant investments strengthen our businesses throughout our town, but especially those that are within walking distance or short driving distance. This builds community. It strengthens it strengthens our community. And for many, remote work is now a fixture, not all the time. But having places, coffee shops, restaurants, gyms, wellness centers, retail services, all of those things that are walking distance, people are looking at their lives differently and expect to have those things near where they live, not necessarily near where they worked. So that is really important. Thriving, we also have opened up the housing. We have really focused on a lot of housing development at all different levels of income in our in our community. And this allows us, Mr. Cortez, I think it was was so powerful when Mr. Cortez said that we want people that are TAs in our schools and cafeteria workers in our schools and people that work in restaurants and public safety professionals. We want them to be able to live in the community, and that's essential if we we need to provide, again, housing at all income levels. And we have people that want to downsize and retiring, and maybe they are they can afford a beautiful condo or a beautiful apartment. That's great, too. It's all wonderful, and we need to provide that all of those elements. And when a person sells a house or another house comes available for maybe a young family or a middle family, then maybe like a Mr. Sweeney that needs a little more space. Teasing. Okay. But also, not only are these these developments, you know, really good and needed for what they are, again, adaptive reuse that works for sustainability, being walkable to vibrant centers, all of those things. But we also it also grows our grand list, which is essential. Municipal governments rely on property taxes, and West Hartford uniquely so. 90% of our income, our revenues, are from property taxes, and 80% of those are from residential property taxes. So when we think about developments or when we are, you know, are considering, that does not drive us that we are going to be growing our grand list, but it's an important element to what we can do as a community. If we don't grow our grand list, we have to cut things. As inflation hits all individuals, all residents, it also hits communities. We have gas to pay in our all the same things impact us, whether it's electricity or gas for vehicles, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, insurance costs, all of those things. So those are important elements that sometimes people in isolation will say, well, we don't want this. Make sure that I'm getting that point across. We also continue to invest on our infrastructure, and maybe not as fast as we would like to in all areas of town, but we consistently and constantly do work on all areas of town in a very, you know, there's a very dedicated hierarchy of streets that we will we can get to. And usually, it's coordinated with other utilities. So sometimes it's not as we plan, but those things do work. But the examples of connectivity and all the things that we want to work on, I think one of the best examples is the Traubrick Trail, a trail that goes from the north end of town to the south end of town in a way that's off road, that's safe, that makes it usable for all, workable for all road users or, you know, it's something that's really, really important to our community. We are also, we also know that our infrastructure is in need of stormwater improvements, and that's something that is going to be a priority for us as well. And we've already started to address, we have to go downstream to go upstream. So we're fixing culverts that will allow for more more water. We know now, we've all experienced 100 year storms on a more regular basis. They're more like 20 year storms now, or maybe even 10 year storms. And so we're building to that to that level. So those are things that will be a long time in coming. This this condition of the stormwater has taken a while, but those things are really important to us. We also are building on our resiliency through obviously stormwaters and sustainability, through tree canopies, more healthy trees, rain gardens, native plantings, and education for the community with our Sustainable West Hartford Commission. Those things are really important. And also sustainability is is part of what's what we've been doing with our one of the things that we've been working on that Mr. Sweeney and actually Ms. McGinnis are part of is a pilot on our solid waste. Solid waste management is really important. Those that that discussion is going to happen at a more accelerated pace for many of us. Composting is really important. We shouldn't be throwing food waste in our trash stream that's going to be buried or trucked thousands of miles away. We need to make sure that it goes back into the earth, and that's what we're our community is doing. And we'll be hearing more about that in the near future. But this is this is what's really important for not only West Hartford, but our state and our country. We've implemented the Vision Zero Safe Streets for All. One of the things that we experienced almost a year ago was an incredible rise in tragic either injuries or deaths on our streets. And we it's absolutely unacceptable when one person is injured or one person dies. But when multiple accidents happen, and we've been seeing more and more reckless driving since COVID, we need to do things to change. So Vision Zero, we're looking forward to actually having that action plan come out after the first of the year, and that will be something that some things we can do right away, some things will be long term goals. And you you heard mentioned, I think, the community center. We bought the St. Bridget School with actually, we worked with the state government, our delegation, to get money to provide actually to to support that purchase. And we are working through our architectural designs on that. And then it will be a challenge to finance that project and hopefully reuse or do an adaptive reuse or something for the other buildings, whether they're monetized privately or or whether it's something that we do a lease with. But those conversations are going to happen. But that is one of the things that actually I was on a panel with a new London mayor who said their community center was funded by some grand list growth that they had that they specifically dedicated to that community center stream, which I thought, well, that's a way for the community to understand the importance of a certain development and how it does benefit the entire community. So so that's something that we we will be hearing more about in the next couple of years. And building on our public art, I actually, my my husband shared a story. He was sitting next to a woman on a plane a couple of days ago, and they were in for the Harvard Yale game, actually, Yale Harvard, however you want to say it, a football game. the Harvard-Yale game, actually, Yale-Harvard, however you want to say it, a football game, and she stopped in West Hartford just because she had read about West Hartford being a place that, a community that she should visit, and she lives in Dallas, Texas, so that's okay, and she was on a flight here. And she said she just happened to walk around West Hartford and thought the center was so beautiful, but what really struck her was the mural, the MLK mural, going down from West Hartford Center to Blueback Square, the connectivity on the side of the, of the library, and she said, I will be back. I'm, it's, this is a special community, I can feel it, I can tell, and she really, and it's just an anecdotal story, just one. And so pretty, those investments in public spaces, that are, those things speak to our community, and we're going to continue that work. In a world where there is so much turmoil and tragedy, and, you know, in our whole world, everywhere we look, actually, and there's some very serious threats to democracy in our own country, it really does feel overwhelming at times. And the small things that we can do to make our community better, intentional work that we do every day, is meaningful, and it's really important. And the little things that make our community stronger are really, really important. One of the, there was a research done by Psychology Today, actually, that said that the small acts of kindness have such a tremendous impact on another person, from giving away a cup of hot chocolate in a park to giving away a gift in a, to giving away a small gift to giving someone your chair on a, whether it's a bus or letting somebody take a taxi. A random act of kindness consistently underestimates the positive attitude on the recipients, but also on the giver. The Journal of Experimental Psychology said that this, many people expect, or it said 85% of people struggle with low self-esteem, I was shocked by that, that we carry around a critical inner voice that tends to put us down. This voice tends to shift our focus inward, insulting us, assessing our every move, and interfering with our relationships. And this inner critic doesn't motivate us for proposal behavior. We feel that we might be rejected. So we have to fight this. So we, some of the things that we might hear in our head, don't stick your neck out, no one wants to hear from you, you're going to make a fool of yourself, but that's not the way, that's rarely the way that people are received. So what I want to make sure that we consider going forward in the next couple of years, that we do those simple kindness things, that we putting ourselves out for somebody else has a tremendous impact on that other person, and we don't know, you don't know and you can't measure what it's going to be, but I know, and I've seen it day after day, it's going to make a huge impact. Too often, we underestimate the power of a touch, a smile, a kind word, a listening ear, an honest compliment, or the smallest act of caring, all of which have the potential to turn a life around. So on that note, I know these next two years are going to have challenges, known and unknown, but together, we can do anything. So with that, do we have any announcements? Mr. Cortez.
So not a food drive announcement, there's always a need for food, but Jaws Barber Shop, 5 Oakwood Avenue in West Hartford, they have yearly coat drive. The very awesome thing about this, Anthony Williams, the barber there, he collects coats, you know, he does, he tries to help everybody, right? So every year he goes, I'm doing new coats only, and then he goes and starts with gently used because it's just more important to have, you know, more coats than anything. That being said, through the, through the end of next week, December 3, he'll be issuing out the coats, and again, the cool thing is that it goes from his hands right to someone in need. So it doesn't go to an organization. I mean, he goes to 30 Pope, 30 Pope Park Drive in Hartford and just gives them out to whoever needs a jacket, families, and to just see there and witness, you know, the good that goes, you know, to see a person that needs a coat to go to work, you know, to be able to see that firsthand, it's so moving. And if you guys have a coat laying around, if even cash to help refurbish some of these jackets, stop by 5 Oakwood Avenue and see Anthony Williams. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cortez. I really, really appreciate that, and it makes, again, a huge difference, a really small gesture that you can control to keep somebody warm. I know our food pantry is in need. They were well stocked from the Morley Food Drive, Mr. Sweeney and I were there, great, but most of that food has been distributed or will be distributed in the next week or so. So please make sure that we're replenished for Christmas time. There is also a road race on Thanksgiving Day, for those that don't want to, you know, race the, have the rush of the Manchester Road Race. There's a 5K that happens in town, which is really a lovely run. And are there any other announcements? So we wish you all a very happy, healthy Thanksgiving, and I hope it is filled with love and grease, and thank you so much for all being here. It means a lot to all of us. Thank you. And with that, make a motion to adjourn. Anybody opposed? Motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.[1761.61][1761.61]